Hello, everyone. Hello. Check. Hello. One minute. Good evening. Call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Buckner.
Here.
Reverend Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Hood.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Mr. Mayo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Mr. Vogler.
Here.
Mr. Whittle.
This morning, we've had a prayer vigil for one of our own police officer veteran Bonnie Jones. To those of you who attended the prayer vigil, we want to thank you so much for your prayers, and we ask for your continued prayers. And speaking of prayer, we will now have our invocation by Councilman Sherman Saunders. I ask everyone to stand, followed by the pledge of allegiance, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. God, we come before you tonight to say thank you. We do not know what the future will bring, but we know that you do. You have always been in charge, and you have never made a mistake. Please continue to bless our city, and yes, God, your children everywhere. God, as our mayor just spoke, we ask for a special blessing for our officer, Ms. Bonnie Jones, and for her family as well. Please forgive us, Father, for all of our ill thoughts and unkind behavior. We ask for love, peace, and understanding. God, I ask that you make our city, Danville, Virginia, another example for your faithful followers to emulate. These blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Councilman Saunders, for that prayer. I want to say good evening once again to everyone who's viewing on River City. Also, those of you who are here who are in this chamber tonight, I want to say good evening and welcome. We'll now have, before I do that, our school board chair, Crystal Cobbs, is here. We want to say good evening to you, Crystal, and welcome to council meeting. We have an announcement and special recognition presentation of a freedom flag to Danville City Council by American Legion Post 1097, if you can come forward at this time. And good evening to you all. Don't be shy. Speak right into that microphone. Come on closer. Speak into that microphone in front of you.
We are here from American Legion Auxiliary 1097, and we want to represent our post and our unit by giving a freedom flag, 9/11, to the city of Danville to fly for all the ones that were lost.
Anyone else would like to say anything? I'm sure council members will want to say thank you. I'm going to start it with Councilman Buckner.
Yeah, thank you guys so much for being here tonight. I know it's a weird time to get out of the house and come up here and present us something, but we thank you very much from the bottom of our hearts. We really appreciate everything that you guys do for our city and our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Councilman Campbell.
Thank you so much. That's what America is all about, patriotism. Remember those who sacrificed their lives for our democracy, for freedom. I admire you, and just keep it up, and whatever I can do, I'm more than happy to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mayo.
Thank you all for being here and for what you do to all of our veterans, but all our military. Thank you. And keep an eye on the one behind you in the blonde.
Councilman Vogler.
Thank you all so much for coming and presenting us with this. And, you know, as you mentioned, we're coming up on the 20-year anniversary of September 11th, and I can still remember exactly where I was. I was in the ninth grade in class, and we walked into the second period and saw what was happening on the TV, and I'll remember it for as long as I live. But I think, you know, sometimes people do forget what happened, and so I'm very appreciative for you all bringing this, and we certainly want to honor those who lost their lives and then those who have served our country before, during, and after. So, thank you very much.
Councilman Saunders? Councilman Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank you for remembering all of our men and women who fought and still fighting to make our country strong. America is strong, will always be strong, and no matter what anyone tried to do to our country, they will not succeed. Thank you for remembering.
Councilman Hood.
Thank you again. Thank you so much for presenting this flag to us and keeping the memories of September 11th in our hearts. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I too can remember exactly what I was doing. I was done a surgery and walked into the doctor's lounge, and everybody was clustered around the TV, and the building was about to fall, and we were all stunned, and people dying, and the heroism of the people that were trying to save them. Many of those died as well. My wife's cousin was in an adjacent building, and his comment was, "I was one of those people running down the street to get away from the building." So, it'll be forever etched on our hearts. Thank you.
Councilman Whittle.
So much.
I don't know where the idea came from to present the flag to council tonight, but someone was very heartfelt, and we sincerely thank you all so much. He's trying to get pictures, but I'm going to get counsel. Y'all come up here so he can get... I want you all in council, and staff, please join us up here, please. Again, thank you all so much. Communications from visitors. Anyone who would like to desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Anyone who desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Cobbs, 506 Franklin Turnpike, Danville, Virginia, 24540. As you stated earlier, I do serve on the school board, but tonight I have a different hat on. I'm representing Black Brand Dan River Region. I have one of our founding members here, Ms. Cynthia Terry, my vice chair, Ms. Katrina Carter, and my chair, Ms. LaShawne Farmer. And so, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, all councilmen. As you may be aware, the month of August is National Black Business Month. National Black Business Month was founded in 2004. This observance highlights the vital role of African-American businesses to the black community and the overall national economy. We thought it fit in to introduce a new organization to the community during this time. Data shows that between February and April of 2020, black business ownership declined more than 40%, the largest drop across any ethnic group, according to a report by the House Committee on Small Business. Black small businesses already had lower access to capital and credit and lower average revenues, making them less prepared to face the financial hardship caused by the pandemic, said Christine Brody, a fellow in the Metropolitan Policy Program at the Brookings Institute. Black businesses even experienced challenges with obtaining capital during COVID-19 from governmental programs such as the Paycheck Protection Program, a program administered by the Small Business Administration to provide funding for businesses that suffered pandemic-related revenue losses. Due to the racial wealth gap, black small business owners, particularly sole proprietors, were less likely to cover business expenses during the pandemic if they did not receive a PPP loan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for allowing us to speak, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmen. As you know, for over a year, we have organized to support and highlight black-owned businesses in our community as a form of economic activism. Partnering with Black Brand provided the infrastructure and support that we needed to do this more efficiently. On July 24th, 2021, Black Brand Dan River Region held its virtual launch. Black Brand is a 501(c)(3) organization focused on business, research, analytics, network, and development. Black Brand is a black chamber of commerce for Virginia's Hampton Roads and Dan River Regions. Our mission is to promote group economics through professional development and community empowerment. Our service area includes Danville, the city of Marsville, Pennsylvania County, Halifax, and Caswell County.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our founding 100 campaign is underway. If you're not aware, when we put out the call in the community to state that we wanted to start a Black Brand chapter here in this region, within four days, we reached our goal of $10,000, and we had 40 members in four days. Now, we are looking to reach 100, and so, we are actively recruiting new members over the next 90 days to reach our goal of 100 founding members. We are currently working with the local Chamber of Commerce, the city of Danville, and other organizations in the community with similar missions. We look forward to building pathways for businesses and partnerships that will help strengthen black businesses within our regional footprint. Those who are interested can visit our website at www-blackbrand.biz, or give us a call, 434-421-5040. We are excited about the future of black businesses in this region and seek to ensure they remain viable for years to come. We thank you for your time and look forward to working with you further in the future.
Thank you. On July 24th, I was on that virtual meeting, and I'm trying to figure out what more do I need to do in regards to... I almost consider myself a member, so tell us more what we need to do, because I'm sure there was others like me that was on the virtual. What else do we need to do?
To become a member, we ask that people go directly to our website. It's a simple sign-up process.
Give us that website again.
And that would be www-blackbrand, that's B-L-A-C-K-B-R-A-N-D, dot biz, B-I-Z, and then the forward slash membership, and it will take you directly to the membership options. It starts at the student level. If there are any students who have not started their businesses, but they're interested, that's $50 for a year, and then it goes to nonprofit, and then sole proprietor or beginning stages, and then all the way up to corporate. Or if they need us to walk them through it, please give us a call, and we can walk you through the application online.
The virtual was absolutely phenomenal, and I'm excited that you're partnering with the city of Danville and the Chamber of Commerce. I was just completely amazed at what I learned, and then I received another virtual in regards to how businesses should have insurance and how banking. It was just absolutely wonderful. So, thank you all so much. Any questions for council? Councilman Campbell.
I just want to say thank you also, and I would like to... I will become a member. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There was also a telephone number, Katrina, that you... Can you get that telephone number, because I'm going to be one of those persons that called this number.
Okay.
Councilman Mayo.
I will too, become a member. And I was going to ask for that phone number.
We're taking those names. We're taking those names.
Please collect my dues before you leave, because this is our Dr. Miller.
Yeah, when I think of black businessmen, you can go way back to about 1830 or 1840. The preeminent craftsman and cabinet maker in the United States was Thomas Day in Milton, Virginia. His cabinets are still being used across the country. It's amazing, staircases, the things he's done. You go to different houses around Virginia, and you'll see his work still being used. So, he had it right way back then, so that's a good example to follow.
Councilman Hood.
Yeah, I had the pleasure of attending a meeting with it last night, and it was absolutely phenomenal to get that much information within that timeframe that you did, so I'm looking forward to signing up as well.
How many of us you got so far? That's four. And what's your goal, 100?
100.
So, it's 96. Thank you. Once again, seriously, it was absolutely... I don't know who else was on there with... It was phenomenal. Both times I've been there, I just opened, as council know, I've just opened up a barbie shop. And there's so much that you don't know. You think you know, but so much you don't know, and I've learned so much from... So, I'm hoping to be in touch, 434-421-5040, or you can go to W... Correct me if I'm wrong. You go to wwwblackbrand.biz/membership? Did I do good?
Yes, did.
Okay, good. Anything else you want to add?
We'll have a ribbon cutting. We'll be hosting our first ribbon cutting for Dr. Kale, Pastor Kale Stone in Gretna, Virginia, on September 18th, and we'll get that information. And we're asking the community to come out to Gretna and support that new business that's...
What time is that? September 18th, what time?
From 12 to 4, I believe it's 12 to 4, but I can get the details.
Sounds good. Keep up the good work. Thank you all so much. You know one question I got to ask. Any man on that board?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Appreciate everything that you all are doing. Sam Fitzgerald is here, and every time he comes, I'm trying to get him engaged too, so maybe that'd be one more to join us. Thank you all so much for what you're doing. We're still in communications. Anyone desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Tommy Bennett, president in ACP. First of all, I would like to say good evening, and thank you to the mayor and to the city council members on the... I attended the funeral of Norma Bronzer in Atlantic City. We also like to thank Tammy Wright Warren for providing a bus on W-WLZ service to Atlantic City. I found out, once I got to Atlantic City, that you all have another minister on council other than Elder Campbell. I found out it's Earl Reynolds. He did a phenomenal job with the proclamation and the resolutions that were sent by the city. It was phenomenal, and he did an excellent job, and I'd just like to say thank you. While I'm on this subject, I have Norma's sister and Katrina. Will y'all come up? They both... Katrina was on the bus with me, and she carries good food.
Did she sign you up for... Have you signed up for Black Brand yet?
I have not, but I...
Well, that's 95. We get there.
Uh-huh. I will tonight. But I'd like for all council members and city manager, everybody who hasn't met, this is Norma's sister, and she, if you'd like to have something to say.
I just want to say thank you so, so much for everything. My sister, when she came to Danville, she, from the beginning, this was home, you know? And she has children that moved to Virginia. I have children that moved to Virginia in the Roanoke area, but this was home. You know, I was telling her friend earlier that the one thing she always loved was family, and you guys really treated her as family, and I appreciate it so much. She got me here, so I was waiting to fill what she was filling, and just under a year, I feel it, you know? I love it. I love it, you know? And I just want to say thank you so much. I'm so grateful that she was here. You know, we had to take her home, but she was here, you know? So, I just want to say again, thank you all so, so much. My one and only sister, one sister, and I don't want to get emotional, but thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And her memorial service for Danville will be at 11:00 a.m. on the 28th of August in the field of Westmoreland. Everybody know that Norma had a passion for Westmoreland and to help with the grant with the Westmoreland Association with Clyde McCoy. So, at 11:00 a.m., we're asking everyone in Danville who can please come out and help with a memorial service for Norma on that day. And so, you'll be getting more notices as we get closer to the date, but it's November 28th, 11:00 a.m. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
A few months ago, I stood before you with a complaint about the Monopoly game. Well, yesterday, I got a chance to speak with the owner of the company out in Cincinnati. I brought the game with me tonight, and guess what? Speaking out pays off. We have Taser Soul, we have Ruby Archer, and we have the Martin Luther King Bridge on the board. So, now I will release all of you now to go to Walmart and purchase the game.
I just want to let you know, five of us are not going to have any money tonight because we giving our money to Black Brand.
Okay, well, after Black Brand, you can go ahead and get the game. I'd just like to say thank you so much, and that I know I came to you with a complaint, but we got a new version of the game, and it includes everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. To Norma's sister, you're in our continued prayers, you're in the family. On August 25th, at, I think it's August 25th, at what? 28th? August 28th, I'm going to challenge Dr. Miller and Lee to a wobble, and while they wobbling on the 28th, I'm going to do the lecture slide, so in honor of them. No, sincerely, thank you so much. Your sister was an asset to the city and to so many, and she helped so many with housing, and so to your family. Tommy, thank you, and Katrina and everybody who went down. And Earl Reverend, thank you so much for representing us well. We're still in communications. Any person who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, they come forward at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record. Good evening to you, sir.
I'm Eagle Garnett. I live at 607 Fairhaven Circle. About four months ago, approximately, there was a small altercation at my house, and I had to take an ambulance, and a charge was put on my child, which never should have been there. Now, he has a charge, which he... They dismissed, but the fact that a prosecutor can have no victim, no charges, and show up in court himself to convict a child to further extend destroying his career. I don't appreciate the prosecutor. He's running unopposed. He's not a very honest person, in my opinion, and I've been following him carefully. When it comes to my child, I don't know why. I've seen a lot of children, they catch hell.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you, sir. Thank you. We're still in communications. Anyone else who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Anyone else who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Under the consent agenda, I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's on the consent agenda may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's on the consent agenda may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Vogler.
Yes, Mayor. I make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Second by Councilman Mayo. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Hood.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Under appointments, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, the council on appointments met, and we'd like to submit these names for your approval. A resolution reappointing Janik Nguyen to the Community Improvement Council. A resolution appointing Casey Cunningham to the Community Improvement Council. I believe she's here in the audience.
Will you please stand?
You knew he was going to do it.
A resolution appointing Sonya Ingram to the Commission of Architecture Review to fill an unexpired term. A resolution appointing Catherine Waters to the Commission of Architecture Review to fill an unexpired term. A resolution appointing Carolyn Evans to the Danville, Pennsylvania Community Service Board.
Is there anyone else here who's present that's serving on one of our boards? Is there a second? Second by Councilman Campbell. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Hood.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
And Ms. Cunningham, thank you so much for welcoming, sir. Councilman Campbell.
Mr. Matt, I'd just like to make a statement that I have served on the board for nomination of boards and commission for quite a number of years, and it always excites me to see more of our citizens engage in the political process and also serve in the community on boards, and we have an excellent staff, people who serve, and I just wanted to thank them and others to call Susan Damascus, if they want to put... They might not know the process. You might want to say something, Ms. Cunningham.
I'm glad you mentioned it. Dr. Miller, I'm going to yield to you, because Councilman Campbell is absolutely right. This is an opportunity for us to pause and thank those who have served on the board. Dr. Miller, can you introduce your committee first and then tell them a little bit about the process?
Okay. My committee, Mr. Mayo, Reverend Campbell, and myself. And our process is we receive applications for people, for all the various boards. Many people have a specific board in mind that they want to serve on. Other people say they'll serve on several different boards. And we try to honor their wishes, get them on the board they want if possible, but like I said, some people find their niche on other boards, and the more people we can get involved, the better. So, you know, if we have somebody that's already on five boards, we may very well... Nothing wrong with them, but we might... And we try to honor their wishes, get them on the board they want, if possible, but like I said, some people find their niche on other boards. And we're, the more people we can get involved, the better. So, you know, if we have somebody that's already on five boards, we may very well, nothing wrong with them, but we may look elsewhere to get. So if anybody out there would like to help the city, serve the city, pays lousy in these volunteer positions, but it's a sense of doing something for the boards, and these different committees do good work, they really do. So it's, it's a way for you to get involved with your city. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Miss. Sue is going on vacation, council. Tell the persons who are listening the process in regards to the application and the address and things they need to do to fill out applications.
If you go online to danvilleva.gov and just go to Boards and Commissions, there's an online application you can fill out. Once you hit submit, it comes directly to me. I keep the applications for several years. If you're not appointed right away, you might be appointed next time. So please, fill out an application, choose as many boards as you're interested in. We always need applicants.
Thank you so much. Under New Business Review Financial Reports, Michael, good evening to you.
Back at tonight, I believe you have the preliminary results for fiscal '21. This is our fiscal year that ended just a few weeks ago, actually, June 30th. I will make a disclaimer, although I'm very comfortable with the information you have, there are still some small items that we cannot adjust until the end of August. However, I feel like these are very insignificant. I think we've made all of the significant adjustments for the fiscal year, and so we can share this with some pretty, pretty good confidence that nothing will change a whole lot from where we are right now. In regard to revenues, our general fund revenues performed very well. We ended the year at 101% of budget, so that X percent gave us $1.3 million more than we had budgeted in revenues for the year. The two main categories that we see the overages in are property taxes and our local consumer taxes. With regard to property taxes, those came in about $1,200,000 over budget, and that is split between real estate and personal property. Real estate came in about $450,000 over budget. The primary reason for this, we did anticipate some increase in property values, but they actually increased about a percent more than we anticipated. So that gave rise to the additional revenue there. Likewise, with personal property, and speaking with the Commissioner of Revenue, a lot of vehicles held their value over the last year and did not depreciate as much as they usually do, probably related to the pandemic and automotive production. So that resulted in $750,000 more in, over our budget. Also related to that is the delinquent collection of personal property. As you know, we've been using an outside collection agency for about a year and a half now for personal property, and that has, that has borne some additional revenue. On the side of local taxes, our consumer-driven taxes, as we've mentioned in the past, sales tax was outperforming budget most of the year. This is due to the state's enforcement of sales tax on online sales. The city generated about $1 million more than we budgeted from sales taxes past year. Mills tax, despite the pandemic, as we've mentioned in the past, we expected that to at least hit target, and it did. It actually exceeded target by 244,000. And I think this is a direct relation to, of course, the capacity limits being opened up for restaurants toward the end of the fiscal year. In addition to those two, we had a surge in recordation taxes. I think some of our corporate entities in the city took the advantage of lower interest rates and did some refinancing. And a lot of times when they do that, if it's linked to property, they have to file documents with the courts, and so we saw that happening, which drove up our recordation income. Business licenses exceeded budget by 163,000, and our bank stock taxes also exceeded budget by 110,000. Lodging was really the only local tax that significantly was below, below budget, but not quite as much as we thought it would be. By the end of the year, we were only 87,000 under budget for lodging, and that's been doing well since. So we have good expectations for the current year. As far as shortages with revenue, as I've mentioned in the past, our charges for services were running short, about 700,000 under budget. The primary two places we see this is in Parks and Rec. Of course, they weren't able to offer as many opportunities to the community this past year. And also, I've mentioned the lower census that we saw at the adult detention facility and the juvenile detention facility over the year. So in both of these cases, we had less revenue, but there were less costs involved as well with those activities. State aid was short in the Department of Social Services, and again, that's a reimbursement issue. The more that is expended in social services, the more the state reimburses, and so there's an offset there as well. The other, only other item was interest earnings. Of course, interest rates have fallen quite a bit over the last couple of years. When we performed or prepared the fiscal '21 budget, we were assuming maybe a half a percent interest rate on CDs and, and bonds that we invest in. In reality, that rate was about somewhere between .1 and .3 percent, so a little bit lower than we had anticipated, which gave rise to that shortfall. But still, in total, our revenues came in $1,300,000 over budget. On the expenditure side, in total, we expended about 90% of our budget. This is quite a bit less than usual. The driving force behind that was schools. As you know, they were, had limited face-to-face instruction, so they did not need to draw down the budgeted funding from the city as quickly as usual. They actually drew down about 75% during the fiscal year. Now, they do have purchase orders and that type of thing that were issued in fiscal '21 that will be paid for in July, August, September, subsequent months. Once we had that in, they spent about 86% of their budget for last year. Now, we do allow schools to carry this money over, so they'll be using that for immediate capital needs and some operating needs in the, in the new year. So we don't get to keep that money. That money does not fall into our unassigned fund balance, even though it was a significant underspending there. Most of our city departments expended about 95% of their budget, and again, this is a little bit lower than we see. Typically, our departments will spend about 98% of their budget. We had two exceptions. Parks and Rec, which I've already mentioned, their expenditures were about 85% of their budget, and social services, again, ran about 85% of budget. So once we weigh in the extra revenue and the reduction in spending, we actually ended with a surplus, and we will be adding, right now, I would estimate about $725,000 to our unassigned fund balance. So that will bring us up to about $34 million in our unassigned fund balance. And I think that's remarkable, considering that our original budget had us drawing some from fund balance. One thing I'll mention with regard to fund balance, that's about 30% of our annual budget. Our policy is a minimum of no less than 20%, so it's as low as we ever want to go, but having it above that mark plays well with our credit rating agencies. And another reason I'll bring this up, as you know, the voters will be deciding this fall about the 1% sales tax option and the borrowing for school capital improvements there. I think it would serve us well if, we may want to consider raising our fund balance policy sometime in the future, if we can sustain this level. That will help offset the extra debt that we'll be taking on if it's approved by the voters. It'll be a nice offset, and it'll score well with our credit rating agencies. It'll at least keep us where we are, and it may help us to increase that credit rating in the future, so. Any questions? I'll be glad to try to-
I know you made Councilman Campbell's day, because Councilman Campbell all the time asks you, how much is in the fund balance? So you may want to give that number again, because that's a magnificent number.
We shouldn't be-
And I guess, sort of citizens and those who are here, you may want to call this, can they call it Rainy Day Fund?
Call it Rainy Day Fund.
Rainy Day Fund. So Councilman Campbell, for Councilman Campbell, I would do a drone, tell him what's in that fund balance again.
Expect it to be very close, if not right at or over 34 million.
And for what, the recommendation for us to have in our fund balance, Rainy Day Fund, is it 20 million?
Roughly 20 million.
20 million, and we have $34 million in it. That's, that's, we ought to give my hand for that. That is huge. Councilman Thomas.
I think, Mr. Mayor, I, I agree. Looking at, looking at your pot shot, there's a lot of pretty blue in that pot shot, you know? Reserve funds. And I know that we're only two months into it, about 10 to go for our fiscal year. Things are looking brighter, and the mayor talked about that 20%. I anticipate that being much higher, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to commend the manager and his staff and the finance director for helping making that possible.
God, thank you all so much. Councilman Vogler.
Yeah, Michael, if, I guess if I were trying to sum it up, and the mayor's gonna like this, I think, if I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, so this past year, we spent less and we generated more. Is that a pretty good summing it up?
You're right, I was gonna like that.
We spent less and we generated more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Michael, you heard it from, great job, you and your team, great job. Under item B, consideration of adoption of citizen participation plan, council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner.
May I like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city to adopt a citizens' participation plan.
Second by Councilman Mayo. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mr. Hood.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
You heard me mention it just a few minutes ago, this young lady is really gonna like this. She needs some clerks. So under item C, because she's going on vacation, Sue, consideration of approval of the appointment of a deputy city clerk for the Danville City Council, council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution appointing W. Clark Whitfield Jr. and Amanda Allen as deputy city clerks for the city of Danville, Virginia.
Second by Councilman Buckner. Discussion of the motion. Councilman Saunders.
I think, Mr. Mayor, when you read the report on the appointments, and I certainly support that, but if you look at that, it talks about his appointment. And I don't think our clerk is here's. So we might want to look at that language. We may appoint some, some deputy clerks, but that word here is stuck out, you know, stuck out at me, and if you look at gender, that's not her.
Good catch. Very good catch. Very good catch. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
You heard me mention it just a few minutes ago, this young lady is really gonna like this. She needs some clerks. So under item C, because she's going on vacation, Sue, consideration of approval of the appointment of a deputy city clerk for the Danville City Council, council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution appointing W. Clark Whitfield Jr. and Amanda Allen as deputy city clerks for the city of Danville, Virginia.
Second by Councilman Buckner. Discussion of the motion. Councilman Saunders.
I think, Mr. Mayor, when you read the report on the appointments, and I certainly support that, but if you look at that, it talks about his appointment. And I don't think our clerk is here's. So we might want to look at that language. We may appoint some, some deputy clerks, but that word here is just stuck out, you know, stuck out at me, and if you look at gender, that's not her.
Good catch. Very good catch. Very good catch. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
You heard me mention it just a few minutes ago, this young lady is really gonna like this. She needs some clerks. So under item C, because she's going on vacation, Sue, consideration of approval of the appointment of a deputy city clerk for the Danville City Council, council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution appointing W. Clark Whitfield Jr. and Amanda Allen as deputy city clerks for the city of Danville, Virginia.
Second by Councilman Buckner. Discussion of the motion. Councilman Saunders.
I think, Mr. Mayor, when you read the report on the appointments, and I certainly support that, but if you look at that, it talks about his appointment. And I don't think our clerk is here's. So we might want to look at that language. We may appoint some, some deputy clerks, but that word here is just stuck out, you know, stuck out at me, and if you look at gender, that's not her.
Good catch. Very good catch. Very good catch. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Yeah, aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Consideration of authorizing and approving the Virginia Abatement Fund and Settlement Allocation Memorandum of Understanding, council, what's your pleasure? Council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner.
May I make a motion that we approve in ordinance a resolution of the city of council of the city of Danville, Virginia, authorizing and approving and confirming authorization and approval of the Virginia Abatement Fund and Settlement Allocation Memorandum of Understanding.
Is there a second? Second by Councilman Campbell. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mr. Mayo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Under Communications, city manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to address the community about the census information that came out recently and has been reported in our local newspaper. As many of you probably have seen, the population for the city of Danville did decrease, but it was nowhere near what some projections have been made us, made, made what it would be, or what they projected them to be. And I think that is a testament to the things that we're doing in, in the community. I'd like to thank Ken Gilli, who is our community development director. He was the representative from the city who helped, with a lot of help from his team, reaching out to the neighborhoods and getting them to fill out their census forms. Obviously, I want to thank the community for taking the time to fill out their census forms. I understand that there were still some undercounts in certain neighborhoods, so there's work to be done nine years from now when we need to do another census count, but my anticipation is that, based on the, I, I feel like, based on the data that we got, that we have flattened out, and we are on a path to having an increased population for the next census. And I, I think the things that we're doing as a community, certainly the city council and what they've invested in, in our community, in our downtown, industrial recruitment, and some various other activities, will lead to future population growth. We are a city who, that used to be 54,000 at one point. We have the infrastructure, we have the, that would be the water, the sewer, the streets, the sidewalks, all those things in place to support 54,000 people, and I hope that we will be able to continue the effort to be able to increase our population for the next census. And again, I'd like to thank the community for taking the time to fill out the census form, our staff that worked hard to make sure that we got a good count, and we'll, we'll commit to doing even better next time, and also to the leadership, the city council, for the policies and programs they've put in place to invest in our community so that we can experience this growth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy city manager, once again, want to thank you so much, you and your wife, for traveling to New Jersey.
But the best way to keep from getting the long hauler syndrome is take the vaccine and don't get COVID in the first place. It is bad. Nine people died in Lynchburg last week alone, and they've got almost 30 people on ventilators. So get the vaccine. Tell your friends and family, if they haven't had it, they need it. And it's just disheartening. We thought we'd at least partially won this battle, and now we're back at square one. It is worse now than it was last winter. Be careful out there. This Delta variant is hitting our children now. A third of the patients are under 30. It is more virulent. It's sensitive to the vaccine, but if you don't take it, it eats you up. People are getting sicker. And it's the kids, and now they're starting to die, the younger people and the kids. So please, please, get the vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Saunders?
Thank you. I would like to ask us to please remember Officer Bonnie Jones. Please remember her and her family. These are people who put the last on the line every single day, and she's a special, special person. I'd like to go back a little bit, Mr. Mayor, and I was tempted to ask Dr. Miller to say more, but I don't know if he needs to do that. But, you know, we talk about this COVID-19 issue. Now we're hearing about booster shots. And I heard today that they're going to recommend to the President, President Biden, that people who have their first vaccination, their first two rather, and they've had it for eight months, that they may qualify before the booster shot. As for me, I like to live as long as I can till God calls me home. Now, for a lot of people who don't believe in the COVID, in the shots, the vaccination, Dr. Miller just told you, you know, about the numbers and about the number of people he saw today. And we've had a lot of volunteers, Tommy Bennett and Rebecca Campbell and others have done so much in our city to try to get people to get the vaccine. So hopefully, if the booster becomes a requirement, I certainly hope, our City Manager, for example, he has gotten both of his shots, the Deputy Manager and others as well, and Council. You remember, we did this trying to show leadership, leading by example. And I hope that Council members who did that would do it again. Sometimes they'll say, you've got to be a certain age, you must have a certain condition. Well, the City Manager's in charge of 40-some thousand people in this city, and so are the nine of us. So we need to make sure that our law enforcement, et cetera, that our leaders get protected and encourage other people to do this. I don't understand, I don't know what the numbers are. I hear only 40% of the people have gotten the shot. You know, that's like four out of 10. I don't understand that. I'm hearing like 99 people died in the hospital not far from here, none had taken the COVID shot. I don't know, I don't know what can be done. We talk about the freedom, we talk about the mask and so on and so forth, but what about the people's freedom who take the shot? So I mean, it works both ways. So I just, I don't know. I mean, Tommy, thank you for all you did and your volunteers when this first started. And Dr. Vice Mayor, as Vice Mayor just said, it looked like it might be coming back. And so we need to just beg people, okay, to just take the shot. And how many of us have been watching television, been reading articles, and we hear people with COVID, with the ventilator, dying, begging people to take the shot because they didn't? I don't know what else we can do. I really don't. But we need to do it. You know, God will provide. Yeah, God gave you common sense, too. Okay? So let's don't put everything on God. You know, let's ask God to help us get rid of this virus and ask God to help us to help people get the shot, the vaccination. I'm going to stop there before I go any further. But thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Miller?
Yeah, just to answer your question. Every year before COVID, people that got the flu shot, we'd tell them, well, try to get your shot, say, September, late September, October, so it'll last through the flu season six or eight months. This is no different. The antibodies start to go down after about six months. By eight months, they'll probably be gone. Every year, we got an extra, the shot you got next year was, in essence, a booster shot. It still had the same H1N1 or whatever. The prevalent virus of this year was in the shot next year as a booster, along with some new strains that they were hoping, you know, that they thought anticipated would arise up. So the same thing's going to happen here. You're going to lose your antibodies and in time, and it'd be six or eight months at some point, your antibody level's going to go down. So yeah, when that booster's offered, I'm sure everybody up here will be in line to get it. And I hope you would, too.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, I'm going to follow the trend of what's been said in front of me, and this is my vaccine card. And I know that the Councilmen, we were all in there in the same day. I keep it in my wallet, and since February 19th, I've been fully vaccinated. And, you know, I've said this in here before, but I'm not somebody who likes shots whatsoever. In fact, I can't stand them, they freak me out. I don't like getting them at all. And I know Doc doesn't like it when I say this, but I want to be-
I hate shots, too.
I want to be straight with people. I'm not somebody who typically gets the flu vaccine. I've probably gotten it once in the last 10 years. So I just want to be straight with people. I'm not somebody who goes and gets every vaccine under the sun every year, but I went and got this one. And I think it's important, I strongly, strongly, strongly encourage people to get this vaccine. You know, I don't believe in forcing people to get it, but man, I really, really recommend it. And, you know, I've had a lot of people ask me over the last several months who are thinking about getting it, they know I got it, you know, ask me, what was it like? Have you had any of this, that, and the other? I'm happy to talk to anybody who's thinking about getting it and wants to know more about it. Like I said, it's been many months now since I've gotten it. I haven't regretted it for one second. Not one second have I regretted getting that vaccine. And if the booster shot, if that's what comes on, I'll be right there, ready when my turn comes to get it like I was last time. And I want to close with this, because unfortunately, this whole COVID issue has gotten political and has been political, and it really shouldn't be, and it shouldn't be whatsoever. But there are folks who are big, big supporters of our current president, and there are folks who are big, big supporters of our previous president. And there's probably not a whole lot of things that Joe Biden and Donald Trump have in common. But there's one thing that they have in common, they both got the vaccine. Joe Biden and Donald Trump both got the vaccine. I think everyone should get it. Thank you.
Mr. Whittle?
Nothing, thank you. Nothing. I've repeated my story many times, and I don't want to keep detaching my thoughts, but to have experienced having the virus and really, you're not going to make it, that you're really going to die. And then in the process of thinking that you're going to die, I mean, really, can't breathe, can't walk, can't eat, you're stretched out. And then to, while you are sick, and never seeing your wife again, and getting out, and then turn around and she's gone. It's something that, it's beyond, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I made personal my mission to hear other Councilmen's talk about how important it is to take the shot. And I'll be honest with you, and I've said it many times, I don't know why I'm sitting here, honestly. If anybody should be alive, it should be my wife. Man, you know her, she was like, man, I'm full of crap, but my wife is a holy lady. You know that. And it's hard. I mean, you're going to play around with life and death when you have an opportunity, not only to protect yourself, but your family and friends? And to hear what Dr. Miller said about how dangerous, we know what's going down. But this is serious, and I'm not going to stay on that. And I'm about through, but I do want to honor somebody tonight, because I heard Councilman Hood and Mayor Saunders and myself, we want to give Sherman Saunders a certificate, because now he's in the Ball Head Association officially. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Glad you didn't put me in that club.
Mr. Hood?
Yeah, I want to first acknowledge the school, school board administration of students and keeping them safe throughout, and them being on this journey, starting for this first week of school, if we could make sure that we continue to keep them in prayers and keep them uplifted with all this going on and keep them in support, because these are difficult times that they're going into, especially you have to go into classrooms, get with new students, and with everything going on, to be able to adapt and to adjust to that. I think that we definitely need to continue to show our support towards schools and schools administration. And second, the South Side area team association, well, tennis association has signups for tennis teams. The deadline is August the 23rd. It's a tennis league for adults, juniors, and elementary. And the team league dates are from September the 9th through October the 24th, and they'll be playing from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM Thursday evenings at the Stratford and GW High School. So again, that's just something I wanted to acknowledge.
Thank you.
Thank you. To piggyback off of what I've just heard and even from Councilman Hood, school is open, and it is always a constant reminder of our children who we hear, we hear and listen to Dr. Miller, and I'm just tuned in to everything he's saying. It's almost a begging moment to asking parents and others who have not even thought about taking the vaccine, look how serious it is. I'm sitting beside Councilman Campbell, and my thoughts always go through listening to his testimony and what he's been through, and for what you see in, not only in our community, but within others who are going through it, you know, death after death, people that's near it, what is it going to take for you to say, I need to do this? Hearing all the social media and negativity about it and asking yourself, I don't need it, you know, don't fool yourself, like Councilman Saunders said, don't fool yourself. If you haven't done it, consider it, because it only helps. I hate to see something happens, and it almost looks like it has to happen in order to wake someone up. But these are our trying times, and I continue to pray for our school system as it's going through. Also want to congratulate Casey for your assignment. And normal sister, good to see you. Twin, right? One year apart, okay, okay. Well, I was close. She's older, though. Okay, we'll take that. But we're dearly going to miss her, and it's so good to see you, whatever we can do for you. Thank you.
Just want to say once again to Crystal and her committee, she got a strong committee. If you were not tuned in earlier and you want to become a part of Black Brand, it's wwwblackbrand.biz, or you can call like I'm going to do, 434-421-5040. Also, continue to keep, as Councilman Saunders stated, please continue to keep our Officer Bonnie Jones to her mother who reached out to us. Our prayers and thoughts are with you. We did reach out to the CEO of the hospital. Just wanted to let you know that we'll still continue to pray for you. Also, Councilman Buckner and I had the opportunity to be at the schools, Brian, and we were at Johnson. And you want to say anything about that, Councilman Buckner?
I just cherished every single second of it, to see the children. You and I had some great times, you know, reminiscing on our first days coming back to school, and just what it means to some of these children that haven't been to school in 500 days. Now, for us back in the day, that probably would have been a dream come true, but for these children, it truly was. You know, some of those first graders didn't even attend first grade last year, and they started their first year in school in second grade. It was just a beautiful thing, and I truly appreciate. Brian called me on Sunday and said, man, we got to get out of here, the more, the better. So Brian and I hit the street, Mayor Jones, you met me over there at Johnson. It was just a magical time. And, you know, to see those children, they are without a doubt our future. They're going to be sitting in these chairs one day, they're going to be making our decisions. The best thing we can do is encourage them, love them, accept them, welcome them back. And it's not going to be an easy year, we all know that. It's already shaping up to be a pretty crappy year, you know, with cases being announced on a weekly basis. But, you know, all we can do is love them, support them, and wish them well.
Thank you. As Councilman Buckner stated to our Chairwoman, we were, you all have done a great job. As he said, it's not going to be easy. We know it's not going to be easy. The kids have been inside for over a long time, and they got that energy that's running all over the place. So be encouraged, know that Council is here to support you. The last thing I have is to all of those who are on the serve on our boards and commissions, as was for stated, Casey, thank you all so much. There's other persons on your row, if you're interested, before Sue go on vacation, we got some, do you have any applications tonight, Sue? You don't have any tonight? Can we get some? Because there's a young man. Yeah, okay, we got some applications tonight. But I'm just going to say this, I'm going to get a little personal. I haven't, I usually don't do this, but Sherman and Dr. Miller, I really don't get personal, but I'm going to get kind of personal tonight. No one knows this but my family. I didn't tell her to cancel, I didn't share with anyone but my family and Mildred. I had to have a surgery, and one number was high, and so the doctor told me to come in. And I went in last week and I had a surgery, and they did a biopsy. And that biopsy, they wanted to find out if I had cancer. And the results came back on Thursday of last week, Thursday of last week. And when the doctor called me and told me to come to the office, and I got to the office, I didn't say, I didn't really say much to my family, didn't want anyone to worry. When I got back to the office on Thursday, about 1:30, I will not tell you that I was not worried, because I was. And when I walked into that office, the doctor told me that I'm happy to report that you have no cancer. And so as I was sitting there, we, he and I began to have a conversation, and he began to share with me some of the same things that Dr. Miller was sharing tonight, today. And I started to think, I don't understand why it is such a battle of people wanting to take care of themselves. I don't understand why, when we did the announcements, when COVID came out, each City Council person went out there and they made a commercial of some sort about COVID, and they were, we were blasted. I mean, we were absolutely blasted. People were saying, why are they talking about COVID? Why are they, can't they find something else to do? And yet, the numbers of deaths were going higher and higher and higher. Councilman Buckner just mentioned that we were at the schools. Dr. Miller just mentioned that the variant is worse than it ever been before. Then Dr. Miller mentioned that kids are dying. Then Lee mentioned politics of it. Thank you, Lee, for that. So here we are, we have something that can help us, but because of the politics, we are willing to risk not only our lives, but the lives of the kids, because I don't like a Democrat, I don't like a Republican, I don't like black, I don't like white, but we are now willing to risk the lives of even our kids. I don't know what else we can do. I know if you get that call like I got, and on your drive up there by yourself, and I can't, Dr. Miller, I can't imagine what the families, Larry tells us all the time, we've been together for over 50 years, he and I.
I'm glad you're older than me.
We've been together over 50 years. And he's absolutely right. I watched Elaine, and she was just so good to so many people. And when I got that message, I was like, when I called Larry that morning, and even to this day, and still continue to pray for him, because it's hard. You listen to him, he's catching hell even now. And when you listen to him, he's, just imagine, he and his wife was over together for over four decades. Sherman, I don't know what else, you said it best. I don't know what else to say, Dr. Miller, I don't. Ken and I talked today. We talked today about incentives, possibly for COVID, for city staff. We talked about it, we talked about it, we talked about it, we talked about it every day. I'm going to get off this soapbox, but I just want to tell you all this, I am thankful and blessed, and I will encourage everybody, do whatever it takes, if not for you, if not for you, for your kids. Don't do it for you. Forget the Democrat, Republican, do it for your kids. You're building your legacy for your kids. Do it for the kids. We got a Chairwoman here, and they are working hard. And I pray, but I just, I'm not a pessimist, but I just, Dr. Miller, don't see schools staying open if this thing keep going like it's going. And imagine this, our kids have been without, in school learning for over 500 days, and if you shut the schools down, what about the education of our kids? Locked up in the house all over again? And you wonder why they are acting the way they're acting? Every time I call the City Manager, I say, how's your son? He says, how's your kids? I say, he says, how's your kids? Even when they're grown. Larry, you had your hand up.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you asked him about what can we do. Well, I said, we have to keep on talking about it. We can't stop. It's each one reach one. We have to reach out in our community. This is very important, because it's spreading.
Very good. Just a reminder, and I'll close with this, Sue, I'm sorry, you have a great vacation. I know you're glad you're leaving now, but I just want to say to, our kids are in school, schools are open. Council has made education our number one priority, and Council has, if you heard the budget tonight, and the fund balance, 34 million, we've given up, Ken, I correct me if I'm wrong, we've given over 27, close to 27 millions to our schools, 24, 27?
Yes, if you count the capital.
Count the capital, $27 million. 26?
26, something like that.
25, 26 million dollars. I know you're glad to leave me now, but I just wanna say to, our kids are in school, schools are open. Council has made education our number one priority, and council has, if you heard the budget tonight, and the fund balance, thirty-four million, we've given up, Ken, I correct me if I'm wrong, we've given over twenty-seven, close to twenty-seven millions to our schools, twenty-four, twenty-seven?
Yes, if you count the capital.
Count the capital, twenty-seven million dollars. Twenty-six?
Twenty-six, something like that.
Twenty-five, twenty-six million dollars. And yet, we've given all that money, and if we have to shut the school, you just heard Michael talking about the carryover funds aren't able to spend because the schools were not open, but they still needed, I don't know, Larry, I guess we'll keep talking about it. But once again, I just wanna say to all our city staff, we say this all the time, thank you for all you did. We said it last time, and we come back today, we're praying for Ms. Jones. To all the city staff, the last meeting we was in, we was praying for Norma and her family, and we're gonna continue to pray with you all. And this week, we're back, we had a prayer on the steps today for Ms. Jones. Please pray for our city staff. Sometimes when you see these storms and the utilities, people can't get to you when they can get to you, the police officers, the fire department, our social services, all of our city workers. Sometimes when you get upset with them, when Earl and Ken and I get all kinds of calls, I got four or five of them this week, about persons with transportation, different things, please know that our city staff is doing everything they possibly can, and they do a tremendous job. And as you close tonight and you go to your abodes, please pray for our city staff. And on that note, we are adjourned.